All right, it's five o'clock, we're gonna call the Beta Order. Glad everybody's here, I'd like to welcome you. Mr. Holland back for another four years. And I also like to welcome our two new members, Ms. Bridget Hopkins and Ms. Pam Bryson. Boy, it's great to have you all and we look forward to serving with you and your service on the board and as we request to give the best things you can for everybody that comes in our school. So, great to have you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, next. Sergeant Orange? Mark? I didn't know you had this. Next on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda that you have in front of us. One change, we're gonna move the elect- we need to elect the Board Officers for the upcoming year right after we approve the agenda before the pledge. I just want to let you know we're gonna move that today. And that's the only other change unless anybody else has any changes. So, we need to approve the agenda with such a change.
So moved.
Have a motion? Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, at this time I'll turn it over to the Director of Schools, Mr. Bill Hopkins, for election of Officer.
All right, at this time we need to elect a Chairman for the next, is it four years?
What next, what do we do it anyway?
Next year, next coming up year. Do I have any nominations for Chairman?
I nominate Jeff Whitmore.
Okay, we have Mr. Jeff Whitmore nominated. Any other nominations? They have motion to close the nominations.
Come in.
There.
They have a motion and a second to close the nominations. So, Mr. Jeff Whitmore will do a vote just for make sure all in favor of Mr. Jeff Whitmore to continue as our Chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you for the work. I appreciate the Board's continued confidence. Thank you very much.
We'll travel that day.
Need to talk to the Financing Committee first. All right, and we need to elect a Vice Chairman at this time. So, the floor's off for nomination of Vice Chairman.
Nominate Tommy Holland.
Have a motion, nomination of Tommy Holland? Have any other nominations? All right, do I have a motion to close the nomination?
So moved.
Okay.
So.
Okay. All right, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Tommy Holland as Vice Chairman?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, you have the license, Mr. Holland?
Thanks, sir.
All right, now we'll move on and we'll, next on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Everybody please stand and clap. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Board Minutes from our November second meeting. Those were sent out to you previously and hope you have attention to review. If not, take a minute and if there's any deletions or additions or changes, whatever, let us know. And if not, Chair will entertain a motion to approve them when you read.
So moved.
Have a motion?
There.
Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Then also next, we have the dispersments that were sent out to you. Take a look at those. If there be any questions, we'll answer those.
What a very meeting. What a very meeting.
No, it's general. All relates as usual.
What was Wilson County Motors just answering yesterday?
What man?
Wilson K Motors on the capital dispersment. I think that was without a driver's ed car.
And he hasn't found it first?
It's on the capital, capital dispersments.
Twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-three.
That is a vehicle, is it twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
That's a vehicle for technology.
I'm moving, sorry, I don't want to do it there.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve the dispersments for November. Looking for a second? Anybody ready? Second? All right, have a motion and second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on. Principal's out there. Principal's door.
They are. And then we see parents that step in because of children will do say.
Okay, that's fine, that's correct. Hey, come on in. Great to have you. Great to have you all, come on in.
Hello, my name is Kayden Rexel and I would like to share what we've been doing these past few months at school. Over the past month, our student program teacher team has planned some fun activities for our classes. The month started by celebrating our honor roll students as well as the Stand Out Student Award. Dr. Styles and Dr. Cartle traveled to every classroom celebrating our hard work and positive character. The star student was given a balloon and an invitation to eat lunch catered by Kahoots. One of our favorite times during the day begins at eight o'clock every morning with our RAS Morning Show. Our teacher morning show team films as the students conduct the newscast. I am one of the co-anchors. Our morning show is broadcasted live into all of the classrooms. Student anchors conduct the moment of silence and the pledge. They report the lunch for the day, birthdays, and sometimes we have special guests. We even had Mr. Hopkins join and Dr. Wilson join us one morning. We had a door decorating contest where students participated in decorating the classroom door. The top three winners got to silly string their teacher. This was a lot of fun for the students, not so sure about the teacher though. To end the month of October, the RAS faculty and staff pulled off one of the best fab blasts I have ever had. There was a broom and pumpkin relay, face painting, and a toilet wall toss.
Did you participate in that?
And my favorite.
She's more of a little man up there than me.
And my favorite, which was the parachute pop-up. Our teacher fundraising team designed some great fundraisers this year. RAS has teamed up with Van Massey Auction to sell baskets for the fundraiser, for our fundraisers. Each basket has unique theme and chocked full of Christmas or fall items. This was also a great way to involve our parents as they worked together to assemble the baskets.
Is that still going on?
No.
No, it's already done?
Yes.
Well, there will be one in the spring.
Okay, okay, got you, okay.
My favorite basket, it was called It's Better to Gather. It had a gather sign, a yard flag, a metal lantern, and much more. We made nine hundred dollars off of our basket sales. Thank you for letting me share what we've done these past few months at Ralph Paskin School.
So, who do you have with you? And who's your guest?
This is my Nana. Hi, I'm Nana. This is my mother.
Hey, mother.
My aunt.
Hi.
My father.
A baby brother.
Probably asleep on the hall.
Would y'all like, would you like a picture right here? Y'all want to take a picture of him?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Remember, like, we'll step out of the way and we'd love you to come right here and just take a picture. Rocket for trophies if you like.
You go.
Come on.
You're the one presenting.
Yeah, you're the one that did some good stuff. You get your job out there, but still, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job, thank you all, too.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
That'd be wonderful.
What confidence?
Yeah. Ms. Dean, please.
I have Mr. Edson Rowlander. He is our President of our Beta Club and he's also on our Student Working Council. So, he's gonna fill you guys in on what's been happening at Federal Middle School.
In this November, the FMS Beta Club sponsored a non-perishable food drive to help the Hands of Mercy Organization for this holidays. Beta Club members in grades fifth through eighth decorated a box to look like a turkey. These boxes were then filled with all kinds of non-perishable items. The classroom turkeys were judged and the best looking turkey belonged to Ms. Daniels in fifth grade. They will receive a lunch of their choice before the winter break. The classroom that collected the most items was Miss Formers' class. Her homeroom will receive a free pizza party for all of their hard work. All in all, the FMS Beta raised over two thousand items for the Hands of Mercy Organization. The FMS Beta Club is anxiously waiting for the results of their Leadership Summit. These results are expected to be in this week. Hopefully, we will qualify to attend the Beta Nationals, which will take place at Disney World. The FMS students and staff also participated in several hat days and sold bracelets to raise money for Lyndon Jones. FMS was able to raise nine hundred and fifty-three dollars to help his family during this difficult time.
Great job.
Thank you.
Would you like, would you like a picture too? Would you like a picture with Nathan?
I'm good, y'all ready? Questions, concerns?
How do you feel about where we're headed?
A good comment, I do, if you do not mind. We did have a discussion today and I would think that Ms. Dean would be in some very, go ahead.
I am, I'm very relieved. It's been a little bit of a difficult day today. I'm filling in in multiple classrooms with every person that I have and tomorrow will follow suit as well. I mean, I don't know if you want me to disclose numbers or.
You don't have to, but it would be very difficult to have traditional school at the middle school if we continue, so.
Yes, and we have a great plan as far as how we're gonna address the virtual kids. The teachers will be meeting with them on their scheduled time. We're gonna go over that with the kids tomorrow. Myself, I will meet with them and talk to the kids about the schedule and what their expectations are and how that will work and then the teachers will follow up on Wednesday and they're geared up and ready to go. So, they'll be meeting with every child every day, so, on a good virtual meeting, so. They're good, so we got a good plan, so, all right, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, Adam's up there.
Hello, hello. We have a couple of members from the Beta Club, Ally and TJ.
Hi. Hi, my name is Tijal Morris. I'm a senior and I'm the Beta Club President.
Hi, my name is Ally Harrington and I'm a senior Beta Club member.
I've worked very closely with Mr. Kane this year to make sure our betas serve our community during this pandemic. Our betas have to maintain a thirty-five GPA or higher and complete ten service hours per semester. We plan on inducting our new Beta members at the end of the school year. Now, Ally will talk about our fundraising and community service.
So far, FHS Beta Club has done a bund cake sale, which was our main source of fundraising this year, but as well as we have done movie nights where students can come and pay to watch a movie and also have a snack while they're there. And then for our future fundraisers, we talked about maybe doing outdoor movie nights due to COVID so we can separate and social distance, or doing a video game tournament. For our community service, we have done a Thanksgiving food drive and we'll be doing a Christmas food drive as well. And the food that we get, collect from those will be going to Hands of Mercy to give to people throughout the community to make sure they have a holiday meal and that no one is without food. And then we have also done angel trees and we have adopted four angel tree children. Students sponsor these children and will get them new toys or clothing that the children, that children might be needing and might not be able to get from their families. And now, Tijal will be talking about our Beta, our Beta Club's favorite annual activities.
One of the Beta, one of the activities our betas look forward to every year is our state Beta Convention. Normally, we would travel to Nashville and compete in events such as poetry, art, academics, performance, trivia, and so many more categories. However, because of the pandemic, our convention will be virtual this year. Many of our members are still going to compete and some of the members automatically qualify for national expansion in Florida. I am competing in portfolio this year and I have to submit a digital scrapbook that demonstrates how our Beta Club supports our community and our school. Another activity betas look forward to is our end of year trip. A portion of our fundraising money goes to our trip to reward our betas for their hard work during the school year. Thank you so much for your time and have a great night.
I guess I just, y'all scared them all.
We have that official lobby.
No, they, they do amazing job. Mr. Kane does great work with those kids and obviously the food box drive, y'all come on back in on this show. But, you know, COVID claims another, you know. Like I said, one, one of the big things they do get to do is the state convention and then hopefully some, maybe some things change by the time Nationals rolls around and some of that loosens up and we'll see. But, very proud of these young ladies and the work they're doing and Mr. Kane as well and we appreciate them being here tonight.
Yeah, thank y'all.
All right, y'all good? You wanna take a picture? I heard, I heard them off there.
Would you like a picture up here at this point? Would you?
Sure.
Well, I got my finger turned up. We'll move, by the way, give you a picture. Trouble here, just when this stuff you're welcoming in.
There you go, get a picture of me.
Get the background, there you go.
There you go.
Oh, get that. There's the little one out there slaving, y'all can take a look.
They champions. Perfect, get in there. Well, you know, lock me out, man. Oh, hold on.
Recognize your thumbprint.
Yeah.
Locked it up.
Like over the phone.
Ooh, don't let this guy.
There you go.
He wanted to go to the door.
Oh, sure. I wasn't very smiling. Yeah, you kind of do. There we go. All right.
Congratulations. Very good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for everything you do.
All right. Yeah, I'm, I mean, I don't know if y'all heard, we had a football game Friday night and, you know, it's kind of a big deal, so, you know, if anybody asks, we, we won, so. Now, I just wanna say, like, from the bottom of my heart, the support you guys give to the school and the kids is amazing, makes nights like Friday night even that much more special. So, thank y'all for that and, you know, like I said, it's, it's a COVID year, we're, we're surviving it, but, but thank y'all again for all that you do. Nice?
Thank you.
Thank you, I was hoping SportsCenter would call me this morning, you know.
It's still time, it's still making the rounds.
See, normally I hate those kinds of things, but I was kinda looking forward to that, you know.
I bragged on Adam, we'll have the one, the interview with the other, with this, and now I can't stop him, I creep.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I don't have any eligibility left. You gotta contribute where you can, so, whatever I can do to help, but, no, thank y'all so very much. And like I said, the kids, they're, they're loving it, they're on cloud nine and that's what it ought to be about anyway, so, thank y'all again.
As long as they can.
Oh, I know, I know, it's forever now, so, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. All right, very good. All right, we'll move on to supervisor reports.
Mr. Jones, you'll be with us due to being at home right now, but if you have any questions that concern any of that, you're welcome to ask me. He kinda filled me in on some issues. I guess I could talk about the gymnasium part is probably the biggest concern. Make sure, is Adam getting left? Has he?
Um, Adam's right here.
Yeah, tell him to step in a second, because we discussed it, this might be a question. I'm gonna talk about the gym and I don't wanna mess that up.
Yeah.
What we found out today is that this approved, but apparently it's such a big deal that they're showing it off around Washington and so, it's, we have not received the letter yet that goes, it will not come to us, it will come to the city giving approval. So, we really can't go forward really until we get that letter. With that being said, we have engaged with three different architect companies and discussed with them what our needs will be, what we're going to do, and what our wishes are. And so, what they're gonna do and they're presently working now is that they're preparing a presentation to bring to y'all so that we can look at three different options of what we feel like a facility should look like. So, you know, we're not gonna just decide, we're gonna get lots of options with lots of feedback and those kind of things, but anyway, that's.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, because it is the first one in Tennessee, everything's gonna be the first, including the process. So, one of the things that Coach Keys had sent me, that he spoke with Carrie, was that she's trying to get us a lot of the procurement data as far as what we can do now and what we need to hold, kinda hold off on. But because it is the first in Tennessee, they're, like, they're trying to get their ducks in a row to make sure that the specs are what they need it to be to hit the FEMA standards. So, you know, they wanna make sure their end's right and then as we get that, it'll kinda trickle down, but it does slow the process up a little bit, so, you know, we're.
The federal government will take it, the state government will.
Right. Right, and when we spoke with, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, you know, they did a lot of work on the Mississippi gyms. But, but see, Mississippi has already had several and they've gone through the process, so they know now, as soon as they get permission for, to proceed with projects, like, they know has to be able to withstand this much wind, you know, these doors have to be spec for this, they have to be, so a lot of that stuff we're working through now and because it is FEMA's first, they wanna try to, you know, it's good to be the first in that we will be the blueprint for ones to come after, but it will take more time just to kinda get everything right.
And two of the architect firms that we are discussing with actually have complete FEMA departments where they specialize in this type of facility. So, that's the reason, they're working, I mean, they're, they're working right now. I mean, we talked to two of them today, so, pretty exciting time.
Yeah, oh, absolute, very blessed.
Anything else about the gymnasium?
Not that I have. You pretty much covered, the big thing was that it's in DC right now and everybody's kinda showing it off and bragging a little bit, so, if, we'll wait a little bit, we have to.
Yeah.
Also, to finish, Mr. Jones' report, transportation has had a big hit as far as COVID, so we've had a lot of people fill in. I know that Mr. Jeff Bryant has had to take the time to drive a bus. We've had a lot of multiple routes, so we are really piecing it together. Thus, another part of our puzzle of why we decided to go full virtual. But anyway, he's working with that also, that I do wanna commend Mr. Jones, Mr. Bryant also for getting out the other morning and when we had the weather situation. They were actively involved in those, in that discussion when we were working with that. And that's all I have for Mr. Jones.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good night.
Ms. Dawson, I see you there.
Great, how are you? So, really don't have a lot to report. Probably the most exciting thing is we're gonna have our first two students. We're doing our paperwork to do our dual enrollment at the Lincoln Center with the industrial maintenance. So, it's gonna work out well, they only have five slots and right now we've got two students that are interested, so we're hoping that's a big boon for those students because once you get in this facility, you don't have to go to Shelbyville and they'll be that much ahead. So, by the time they could literally get through a half year of instruction and they're just gonna go after lunch and go there and be in that program. So, hoping that will expand and we'll be able to get more students in that. Unfortunately, they're like us, their, their cybersecurity program did not make because guess what? It's hard to find instructors, which is exactly why we don't have one in our building. So, if you know somebody who's retired and interested in teaching cybersecurity, let us know because we can certainly get them hooked up with that.
Ms. Dawson also facilitated a meeting with some of our administrators concerning our COVID lead.
Yes.
So, a lot of the time has been spent on that.
Yes, the world is kinda changing in that and, you know, that goes back to what he said about the grant. We're really inventing the wheel and, of course, we're not gonna tell you people's personal information, but, you know, even from the perspective of FMLA and what that looks like and realizing that our employees and we get the additional ten days and how we're gonna work that out. You know, we've made a decision in our system that it's imperative, we want teachers to teach and we want students to be engaged. So, whatever we have to do to make that happen, to try to salvage as, as much instruction, effective instruction as we can, we're gonna try to do that. But it's, it's a different world. It's a very different world. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Giffen, I give him permission to travel with the basketball team to watch his daughter play.
Legit there, but, but, is Ms. Tijal here?
She is.
Welcome, welcome new board members and I'm gonna go with a no report tonight just because it's a super busy night and I've been out with COVID, but anyway, and so, I'm, I'm just catching up, reading three hundred emails and trying to get back in it. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, welcome new board members and I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Young, I hope she's out there. Ms. Young, there she goes. Go on in, Ms. Young.
How are y'all this evening?
Fine.
Welcome to the new board members, glad you're with us. Just a little bit about what's going on in instruction in pre-K through four. I recently finished my certi- national certification in class, which is a classroom assessment scoring system. I'm in the process of evaluating the pre-K classrooms. It has three huge domains and has several things underneath it. Emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. This is adopted by our state, it's required as part of our grant when we start writing our pre-K grant for the spring. The other thing going on in instruction, we. Uh, the other thing going on in instruction, we are currently completing benchmark assessments, we're completing our AIMS Web for our skills assessment, and our case assessments for our standards-based assessment. We'll have both of those reports back if nothing happens major, uh, before we get out for the holidays, some teachers will have that data to look at and review to get ready for the next semester. Any questions?
Very good, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to, uh, supervising reports. Uh, anything on facilities transportation?
Just to say, um, on behalf of the facilities committee, thank you to Mr. Hopkins and to the principals for taking us on extensive walkthroughs and whatnot of all the, both campuses and all the facilities. Um, we've got some homework to do, and I'm the first to confess, I haven't done it yet, so we're gonna get on that and make that a priority, because I, I think it's very important, especially with the FEMA-TEMA project making progress, we really need to make sure we have all our ducks in a row at, for, because one of the goals here is to help the board come up with a real strategic plan for facilities and development. Twenty years, you know, the, you know, the, almost the dream plan, so that, you know, the, the the obvious thing is, we don't want a building, just slap up a building somewhere and then realize five years from now, well, wait, if we hadn't have built that there, we could have done this, and that would have solved, you know, so we didn't, I think by taking a strategic look at this, the board's gonna be able to really avoid that, and I, I think so many things are happening that suggest that good things are coming for this system, and we need to just really be prepared in every way, so we're, we're taking the facility side of that very seriously, and we'll share with you, and I mean, it'll be a whole decision, there's nothing the committee is gonna do, uh, but it'll be a chance to, to go total scrub on what we, what we dream of over the next couple of decades, so, and we'll be back.
In my run committee, I, I can go ahead, if, if Mr. Clark and Ms. Murdock will continue on facilities transportation. Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Bryson, I want, if y'all serve on the policy committee.
Okay.
I know, I think, uh, Mr. Hopkins will start breaking up your stuff, or whatever, updating, whatever.
Now that he's done that, right, they'll be in touch with you.
It's time to appoint committees, and then Mr. Holliday and I will, uh, meet the finance committee, so, so we'll do that, so. I know, Ms. Hopkins asked me what I was gonna do, so now you know, so.
You're right. Yes, we'll be in touch with you about, you know, that's the reason there's no policies, as you'll see on this, uh, agenda, uh, due to the fact that we didn't make, there's no policy made, but we'll talk about y'all.
All right, uh, we'll do finance, and I think, uh, Paul's out, Paul, is Paul Young's out there again, or? Paul, good day, again.
Hey, how's it going?
Fine, how you doing, Paul?
I've gotten used to it now, so. Takes a while, but I'm there, I think. Um, before we, uh, get into the audits, uh, I always have to communicate a few things with the board, uh, mostly general information, but just for the board's information, when you start looking at these financial statements, um, there were no changes in any significant accounting policies this year from what, uh, what was, uh, what we've been doing. Uh, certain numbers in the financial statements, uh, are estimates, uh, and estimates by their nature can change in the future. Uh, some of the key estimates include depreciation on capital assets, uh, certain long-term liabilities like for pensions and other post-employment benefits. Uh, we talk about misstatements, uh, any misstatements that we encountered were corrected. Uh, we did find ones after those corrections were made, uh, when we were doing some work subsequent to, uh, what we call our subsequent events work, but, um, it was, uh, some accounts payable related to some of the construction work, but nothing material to the financial, so we passed on that. Uh, and all this that I'm going over now is in writing, and, you know, and on file, but we're required to communicate it each year to the board. As far as the, we'll get into the audits, the, um, audits went well, we, uh, we'll start with, uh, you got a couple of books in front of you there, the bigger book, uh, that's the, uh, all the funds here at the central office, uh, of the Board of Education. Our opinion is, um, pages one and two, it's unmodified, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented. Uh, because this is the government contract, our government audit, we also report on internal control over financial reporting as well as compliance. No findings there to report, and that report is on pages 76 and 77, toward the back of the book. And also, lastly, we, um, because of the amount of federal expenditures that run through the school system, we also do what's called a single audit. Uh, the purpose of that audit is to, uh, audit, uh, the compliance with compliance requirements of federal programs. This year, uh, the major program audited was the child nutrition cluster, which is school lunch, school breakfast, that kind of thing. Our opinion is unmodified on that as well, meaning that, uh, in our opinion, the school system complied uh, in all material respects with the compliance requirements of that program. We did have one finding, a compliance finding, uh, related to that, uh, it was, um, part of a school lunch is, uh, you know, is free and reduced lunch for students that qualify. Um, I think I am gonna remove it now. Um, and one of compliance requirement is to, uh, sample the applications uh, that have been turned in for free and reduced lunches, and, and verify, uh, the income reported, and that verification, the evidence that, uh, is obtained for that verification has to be in writing. We had one instance where it wasn't, it was a verbal, and it was simply a, um, misunderstanding of the requirements, uh, but we, we touched base with state, just to make sure that we were, uh, correct in that. Uh, but going forward, that shouldn't be a problem, again, that's, uh, was, uh, overall, our opinion's unmodified on the program, so no, no problems. Um, now, as you look at that book there, it's basically the same, I know we've got a, a couple of new faces, but it's basically the same as you've seen before, uh, as far as the, how it's put together, the our opinions up front, followed by management's discussion, the basic financial statements, and then the rest of it's basically supplementary information until you get back to the single audit stuff that I just talked about. And I will, we'll remind you, and for the folks that are new, uh, you know, we end up basically having to do it, uh, report twice, two sets of financials, you got the fund financials, and you got the government-wide financials, same data, but it's on two different bases of accounting. Uh, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as we get into it. Uh, as far as the audit goes, and the results, and the, everything I just, uh, reported to you, any questions so far? All right, as far as the financial, I'll just touch a few highlights, um, and we won't go page by page, I, I hope you're, don't mind, don't mind that. Yeah, uh, but, uh, I, as I said, you know, you got the fund accounting is basically how the school system keeps its books. It's how we do our budgets, it's how things get reported to y'all on a month-to-month basis, is on a fund basis, okay? And the general purpose fund, which is the primary fund of the, of the system, for the 2020 year, had a positive change in fund balance of about $9,281. That, uh, is down from the prior year. Uh, the reason, we had, we did have some increase in revenues of about $150,000, mostly BEP uh, was the biggest part of that, but we had an increase in expenditures as well. Uh, primary was personnel cost, salaries and benefits, uh, we had a, uh, I think we had approved, uh, I believe maybe 3% uh, across the board there, and we had some additional, uh, headcount as well. We also had some additional costs incurred for SRO, uh, expenses, uh, last year, so that's the reason for the decrease in the change from last year to this, but we were still uh, favorable compared to budget, I think budget really thought we would be in a negative uh, change in fund balance for the year, but we ended up with a positive $9,281. The other fund I'll talk about, the next fund I'll talk about is the cafeteria fund. Cafeteria fund has a negative change in fund balance for the year of about $59,000. The cafeteria fund was probably, uh, the one fund most directly impacted by the COVID closures that we experienced last spring. You know, we continued to serve meals, but, you know, the revenue that we took in was not what it would have been otherwise, um, uh, and some of the costs continued. Also, in the cafeteria, we did some capital work, capital outlay type things, um, a new serving counter at Askin's, uh, was one of the larger things, that was $42,000, and some other things, uh, that contributed to that, okay? But they, the, the cafeteria was for sure impacted by the COVID closure that we had to go through. Federal money, uh, the title fund or federal fund, if you want to call it that, uh, that's where most of the federal money, with the exception of the, the child nutrition, goes through, and that was down, uh, total federal revenues were down about $63,000, as were the expenses as compared to the prior year, and that was mostly from the two larger programs, uh, Title I and Special Ed. We did have some new, we had some, uh, some new federal money come in, that 21st Century, uh, grant, and that was just a partial year on that. Uh, but overall, a little bit less federal money coming through last year than the year before. And lastly, I'll talk about the capital projects fund, of course, you recall last year, uh, the big inflow of money from, you know, our share of the proceeds of the county's education bonds, and we started to spend that last year, but spent quite a bit more this year, uh, about close to $2 million uh, in the capital projects fund, uh, in addition to that, principal and interest on the bonds came out of that fund. Uh, some of the larger, uh, expenditures, uh, of course, I know you're aware, but, you know, some HVAC work at the high school, very large project, uh, that was not complete at the end of the year, was some HVAC at, um, middle school. Uh, of course, we did gym floor at the high school, some flooring at Askin's, bought a bus, special needs bus, that's some of the larger things that we spent, uh, in, in that $2 million. Um, from a fund standpoint, I was just wanted to point out those kind of points. Any questions on any of that?
And I'm sure with the refinance of the bonds that have just been done, we're gonna have some savings on interest and whatever.
Right.
Coming this year.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
Just to let everybody, if everybody's not aware of that, you know, we proved, that was approved or whatever, but we'll be saving some money. Not extending the term, but that, that was a win-win-win for everybody.
We'll be helping that tomorrow.
Okay, there you go.
And, uh, overall, it seems like to me, I want to think, the schools part of it, savings is.
About half million.
Yeah, around a half million dollars on the schools part of it.
Total.
Total.
Half of the life.
Savings overall.
Yeah.
And our part of it, we don't have very many bonds right now, we're gonna get a couple of million savings, so, seven million in all savings. There is some fees that comes out of that, and has to be paid out of that, but that's close, close numbers.
Break your way down, it's very difficult.
Well, we, I, just on behalf of the board, Mr. Bryant, thank you for looking out for us on times like this where there are opportunities for us to save some money for the system, thank you for including the school system in that, and appreciate the mayor and all of them looking out for us. I assume, I assume that's gonna pass, but time will tell, right, not until the vote happens.
I think we'll have a majority vote.
Yeah, I, it's just great that we can.
My guess is, you know, I'm just guessing, but I'm guessing, um, we're gonna vote on two. We're gonna go on a new bond, uh, for us, for the city, we're gonna do a lot of infrastructure work with that bond, paving and sidewalks and drainage and various, and then we'll be voting on separate to refund it. Why anybody would vote against saving $750,000, I can imagine, so, they could be a good vote.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Um, what I've just kind of went over quickly with you is all, uh, from the fund financial statements, the fund point of view. The fund accounting is a, is a, is a shorter-term focus. Uh, I'll spend just a little bit of time, I said that we do, we kind of have two sets of financials, the government-wide financials are full accrual, uh, financials, and those are pages nine and 10, there's only two pages. That takes all the fund information, it puts it together, and does some things, some changes in accounting, okay? Things like, uh, capital assets that you, when you make an expenditure at the fund level, it's just an expenditure, but uh, at the government-wide level, it goes on the balance sheet or statement of net position, gets depreciated off, and a, a big thing is that long-term liabilities, because of the short-term focus of the funds, you don't really see those in any of the fund financials, but you see them here. Uh, any, and that's the long-term debt that we just talked about a little bit, is, is here on the statement of net position, page nine. As are things related to pensions and other post-employment benefits. You see cash was about $10 million, $800,000 there, that was about $13,100 last year, so that's down $2,303 for the reasons I just went over, you know, a couple of million dollars capital outlay, uh, uh, expending that bond money. Now, I will point out on this statement, the, is there, there are some things on here that you look at, and, um, Mr. Hopkins would look at there and say, well, I don't know where that is, you know, and things like the pension asset there, a million six. And what that is, you know, is, that's the school systems, what's, we participate in the state plans, and, you know, they've, you got a big pension liability, assets have been set aside, at this particular time, there were more assets than there were liabilities, so you got an asset, but that's not an asset you can utilize, or it's not money you can spend, okay? It's restricted, and you'll see that when you get down to the net position, that it's been, it's restricted, uh, for those purposes. Just wanted to point that out to you. Uh, the next page, or the next statement, the statement of activities is kind of an income statement, um, would be, and it takes all those things, again, from the funds, everything I told you for the funds basically applies here as well. Uh, that would be page 10. Oh, big book, big book, I'm sorry.
These words are not matching up.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right, they wouldn't. Yeah, page 10, uh, there's, um, at that level, we've got, um, again, this is all the funds and some changes in accounting, a net decrease, or, or an incre- decrease, I'm sorry, in net assets for the year of $628,000. If you were to look at this same statement last year, you would see a positive of $8 million, that's where we had that money coming in from the county bonds. Uh, so you take that out of the picture, and then the things I told you about, the funds apply here, that we had to increase salary and benefits, SRO, but in addition, in this statement that you didn't see in the funds is, uh, there was an increase in pension expense reflected here. Okay, but, uh, I know that's kind of maybe getting down a little bit too much in the weeds, and I apologize, but if any questions or on any of that? That's all I wanted to talk about as far as the big book, now we'll go to the little book. Okay, um, you know, I mentioned the fact that we got two different bases of accounting going on there, well, here comes another. Uh, and this is the activity, the internal school funds, this is student, um, activity funds at the individual schools, and it's done on a basis of accounting that's totally different, it's actually a regulatory basis that's mandated by the state. So the format of the statements is a little different than you see, but bottom line on the audit is, our opinion on it is unmodified, meaning that based on, using that basis of accounting, these statements are fairly presented. We also report on internal control as well and compliance, we had a few findings. I've mentioned before with the board at the, at the school level, segregation of duties is a, it's difficult to adequately segregate functions with a small staff sometimes. Um, we had a, a finding related to bank reconciliation at the high school, it wasn't significantly uh, out of whack, but it was, was not really in balance, and so we had to report that as a finding, and we worked uh, with them over there, and I think we're gonna, uh, that shouldn't be a problem going forward. It was a little bit of difficulty with the QuickBooks system that used the reconciliation feature, and maybe not understanding all that, but again, I think going forward, that shouldn't be a problem, and the last finding was related to the state of Tennessee requires, uh, gives you three days to get money in the bank from the time you collect it to, it's gotta be deposited intact in three days, we had a little instance there where, um, that didn't happen, relate, it was related to some, I think concessions volleyball, and again, I think it was just not understanding that. Again, I think it was just not understanding that on the part of the person that collected. But that shouldn't be a problem going forward either. Yeah, we've had that before, yeah, yeah. It happens, it happens. Well, that's all I had for you. Now, I know you probably just got these books there this evening as you got here. So if you run across anything when you've had time to look over them a little more, and any questions or need to, wanna ask me or talk to me about, give me a call, be glad to talk to you.
I do have one quick question. When it comes to some of the funds, and I don't know that I'm getting on the correct page. But I, but I do see like on page twelve and thirteen, there's finding for athletics accounts. Like under, there's a restricted fund athletics.
Yep.
And then on page thirteen, there's a similar thing where it just says athletic. I assume that is a single line in the audit, but it represents what? Under, under that, there would be a baseball account, and a football, and a men's, and a basketball, and a little lady's basketball, and a volleyball, and all that. Is that, is that correct, or is that a reminder as well?
You're mostly correct.
Okay.
Okay, as I said, you know, this is a regulatory basis of accounting, and it's based on a manual that's put out by the state. And all these restricted accounts that you see here, the club accounts as well as athletics, they've gotta be a, they're viewed as a self-balancing set of books, essentially, each one, each in, no matter how big or small. And the manual gives you the option, as it, when it comes to athletics at least, if the school and the board or the director, whoever had the authority to make the decision, if you wanted to treat your athletics in, as one big restricted fund, that's acceptable. If you wanted to break it down and have a baseball, or a basketball, and a football, each one would have to stand alone and be, and be on here as a separate fund. Okay, and kind of, that's acceptable as well. And the third option is, you can have that big athletics fund, and if you want to break it down internally, you can, but it's still from the point of view of the, the funds, it's one fund.
It's one restricted.
Now, that can be changed at the discretion of the board and the director.
Currently, we have one.
Currently, you have one fund.
We have option one.
Yeah, you got one athletics restricted fund. Now, I think the schools do have some breakdown, it's internal, it's not reflected here. It's not a separate fund that has ever been set up. You'd have to actually approve a fund, set it up, and start tracking it if you want it to go that route.
That is the most common way of doing is having one fund with appropriate.
That is by far the most common.
Individually internally.
Yeah.
The negative to going the other way is the fact that with minor sports that are not revenue-producing, they will be in the negative very quick.
Yeah.
And it will reflect in your, when they give us this stuff, it'll look really bad.
I think this is generally the preferred, now, and, and that's a good point, I'm glad you said that. Any of these funds here, that if they ever go negative, that's an automatic finding. And it won't even, it won't only come from me, you'll probably get a letter from the state that says, hey.
So is it our, is it our school building, school level bookkeeper who is managing the internal funds of these one restricted funds now?
Yeah, if they, if, if, if there's an internal break, and, and it's just like, as, you know, it's not visible here, but the teacher BEP fund that you see here is one fund, legal fund, restricted fund. But I think the internal bookkeepers actually kind of track that by teacher, okay? But it's unofficial, they don't have to, you know, they don't have to worry about balancing and having a positive balance at the end of the year, as long as this restricted fund is, is positive. So, the most common is what he just said, is to have the one fund. And if you want more detail, do it kind of on the side, rather than having us, an actual restricted fund set up on your financial statements that you gotta.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
Balance to, so.
Are we all three schools using QuickBooks?
All three schools use QuickBooks. That's right.
So who ultimately then, so, so like athletics, that's FMS and FHS, and within, say, one of the schools, high school. Who ultimately has a, obviously, you have a thought.
Ultimately, is of the building level, it's the administrator. Now, it's much like I have authority here, but we have employees that actually probably get into the weeds and do that.
Most of these, all these restricted accounts, according to the manuals, should have a sponsor. Each of the club accounts, and usually, if there's not one assigned, it falls to the principal of the school. The principal is kind of automatically the sponsor of the general account. Then all the club accounts, usually a teacher or somebody's assigned to sponsor those, maybe a coach on the athletics, but, or maybe the principal.
Do you get these reports from, on a quarterly basis, like on these smaller fund accounts? How often are your eyes on these fund accounts?
Once a year. My eyes are on them once a year.
How often are your eyes on fund accounts?
Once a month, could be.
I was just kind of curious, so we could assume like for, and I'm, I'm sorry.
What page are you, what page are you on? What page are you on again, Mark?
Uh, thirteen I was looking at.
Okay, thirteen.
Baby club, club account, it's safe to assume that the sponsor is probably Mr. Kane, who is here.
Well, this is middle school, that's what I was gonna say.
Oh, right, that's why you get me straight here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. So in any case, there's a baby club there, and I assume that that would be Mr. Kane.
That's right.
Wouldn't have to be, but he was, he was here as.
That's right.
So, so then, is the AD, is the athletic director then the sponsor for the athletics? How do we break those down?
It's actually broken down by the sport locally at the school. But again, it already goes back to the local school administrator.
Yeah.
Mr. McCormick in this case would really be the person.
Really the sponsor for the athletic.
Yeah.
Isn't sponsor all.
That's right, that's right.
Even over Mr. Keys, I mean, it, it all falls under his supervision.
Yeah.
Thank you for entertaining my basic questions.
And, and now I'm saying, these are, again, even changing lines, these are very common scenarios and situations that are done at school systems throughout the two states that I know about.
Any other questions?
Also very common for the, often I look at it a once a year too.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank, thank y'all very much. Glad to work with you.
Paul has spent, has spent many a time with me and stuff, and I, I appreciate the time that he has entertained me. Mark, some of those same questions. I mean, I want you to know, so we don't, don't, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, glad to do it. Y'all, good evening.
And I think for that presentation, it's up to we were to approve the audit, or any audit, whatever. So I make a motion to approve the annual audit from Putnam Hancock.
I'll second it, we accept that audit.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I think also too, at this time, is we need to approve our auditor for next year, if I'm not mistaken, which we've used. We've used them for years and years and years, they do a great job. So I entertain, I make a motion to approve Putnam Hancock to be our auditor, our external auditor for the upcoming year.
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good. All right, thank you. All right, it's your responsibility, we'll explain that, and we'll tackle that next month, whatever, we may have things. That'd be great, and so, Mr. Hopkins, you're up.
Yeah, we have the two twenty, twenty local education agency compliance report, I sent that to you. I checked that through all the directors, we are in compliance, but it needs to be a voting item. And so y'all need to approve that we are in compliance, and of course, Mr. Woodman, you and I will sign that.
I make a motion to approve the LEA compliance report. And that goes to the state?
That goes to the state, yes.
That goes to the state, yes.
And we are a little bit behind that, they did not send it to me, they.
Sure.
You know, they're having trouble figuring out.
That's fine, that's true. So I have a motion to approve the LEA compliance report.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.
I reluctantly have a personnel item here, which is Ms. Joanne Stevens' retirement. You know, she is wonderful, as y'all know, much more even than I, but she has been great to me. And she will continue to work with us a little bit on a contract basis as we phase in our new person. But that, this needs to be only coming to prove that.
Oh, we know we do need to, reluctantly we'll approve her.
Right, that needs to be, that's what they say.
It is, it is, I make a motion to approve Ms. Stevens' retirement. Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And this was lovely to speak. He did a great job, he did a great job.
Yeah.
Well, it's completely Frank's fault, so I. All right, I have a few things else that I'd like to know, the voting items for myself here, but. All right, one is, we will be delivering Christmas bonuses from the school board. It's in the budget that the finance committee talked about, so we'll deliver those sometime this month to all of our employees. Noted that reason we did not choose to give more, or y'all not speak on behalf of y'all, is that, you know, our employees were fortunate enough to receive a two percent raise this year when other systems around us did not receive that. So, I, I noted for the record to make sure that, that. The other thing is, we are going to be changing our COVID protocol policy because the Tennessee Department of Education has now decided to adopt the CDC's guidelines. So with, no longer will be fourteen days quarantine, it will go to ten. But we will not start that till second semester. So we're gonna continue with what we have now.
And the second, make, second semester, after the first of the year?
That's correct, it'll be when we come back in January. The, let's see, what else here? Oh, we did meet today, talked about rings and those type of things, so we'll give you more information on that. You'll notice on your desk, there is a white bag there. Those are gifts from the system to all the board members, Merry Christmas. You'll open, I don't have to open them right now, but before you leave, open those up, and you'll see that there are some nice gifts from the employees and the system. So thank you for what you do, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, that's our gift to y'all. I do have a, I passed around a picture of a plaque of Dr. Wilson. We'll present that to her, and we'll do something for her, and we, she would talk to her. She'd run away till everyone can attend, and it'd be a lot easier to, than have to try to do that now. So I don't want you to think we've left her out there on that. I think that that's all that I have. Oh, last thing. In January, if y'all would not find, everybody come prepared to take a nice picture. It's time to do a picture for new school board members, and we'll do one, so we can hang out there in the, in the hall.
So probably to gather at four-thirty, just get all that taken care of before the meeting, and we'll talk about the meeting.
I don't know if this is still a tentative plan that Jennifer Fleming that's coming from Literacy Academy, is, is she coming?
She is, but I, I'm waiting on some, Cindy's supposed to get me, I talked to her today. I'm waiting on some confirmation information before I send it out to y'all. But I was gonna ask for a work session in January at, at four. So I can ask that now, but I really want to make sure that we're on the timeframe, you know, before I go too far with that.
Well, if she ends up, I mean, make sure we give her enough time, I just want to make it three, I mean.
Three-thirty, three.
Well, what we kind of planned is that it would be forty-five minutes to, or her do her part for us. And then we would have fifteen minutes for a picture, then use the rest strings and get us all together. Then we start at five, that's kind of my sketched-out plan, but I didn't want.
So just maybe plan on being here early next quarter.
Yeah, I, I guess you said, so everyone just kind of make arrangements, it looks like we're probably start about four o'clock.
And you can text.
January fourth.
Yeah, is that okay? I was gonna, I was gonna ask everybody, is that okay? Is everybody good on January fourth for the next board meeting? I mean, I ask that every month because, I mean, people.
And she's coming to stay in town that night, so she's gonna spend the night and stay over and do training for the elementary teachers on the next day, which is her.
Is everybody okay on January fourth for the next board meeting, whatever, just want, I ask that every month, just to let you know. Sometimes we have to change.
And we're gonna send out reminders on all this, and hopefully I'll get a confirmation today, or tomorrow, on the, Cindy Young's kind of handling that for me.
Okay, very good.
I think that's all that I have.
When is our new position beginning our new hire?
Uh, she will be here on the sixteenth. Uh, she's coming Wednesday to go over some paperwork and to meet and get a look at some budget information. Her and Joanne have been in constant contact, do, do any of y'all know her? I mean, she's from Fayetteville, I, I obviously.
I don't know who the new person, I mean, the person takes Joanne's place.
At least, at least the witnesses.
Lisa Williams, she's probably best, I guess, is this, was your recording?
Yeah, so. But, but a very good interview, we used a committee. I wanted Ms. Joanne to be part of that committee, she knows more about her job than I do. And so she was able to give me questions to ask her, so that we could do that. We had six wonderful, very qualified candidates, very, very impressed with the candidates. And I felt that she finished, did well, and she was recommended by everyone on the committee. Ms. Tooten also was on that committee, who was able to ask some federal programs and some special education questions that apply to finance. So I think this person's been really better, and she is local, which is good because she's invested in the community. Presently works for, in Huntsville, and she has a bachelor's of science in accounting.
She did work South Central Human Resource for a while.
Okay.
Their finance area, I think.
All right.
But I knew you said you had several good candidates, so that's.
We, we did, I, I was really impressed, I, at one time, I didn't know that we were gonna have any candidates, and then we ended up having. I will tell you, it's like a lot of things, sometimes you have to get out and beat the bushes. And you have to get that out, and I think some of y'all gave me some suggestions about putting things out, all that.
Very good.
I, I do want to make one comment here, now that I look at it, I say this. It, it's so impressive to watch those students and their leadership ability, I think. And the last comment I'll make about that is, it is very difficult to teach someone to give when you're thirty-five years old. But when you teach children to give when they're in school, they give forever. And man, that is really good, I, I, so kudos to the system. Keep teaching children to still be givers while they're in school. I, I mean, I think that's just so important. That's all that I have.
Mind your purpose.
I guess that's for y'all, or I guess that's part of, we have the value one life evaluation.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say.
Yeah.
It may be valid.
I was skipping.
No, I'm sorry, it's, it's all I can do. Yeah, okay, so we, so the director's performance evaluation, if y'all remember, I know. Ms. I think Ms. Price is, it's the board, you know, we, we hire the director of school, that's one of our major responsibilities. And it's also within their contract that we evaluate them every year. We've had a, a form that we've used, which has been very functional, and been fine, and we've used it for the last, I guess, eleven years. But it's time to kind of update it, and we took a couple of forms that we're familiar with, and we, and Mr. Hopkins was gonna combine it, to kind of meet our needs and whatever, and make sure it cover all the responsibilities that the director handles. So that's been sent, that was an email, wasn't it? That was email, whatever, so I don't know, I, I'm just saying, hopefully you had a chance to review it, I don't know if you have, whatever, but it looked pretty good. So I don't know what everybody else thinks, I mean, I'm looking around the room, so it looks pretty, pretty good. Of course, and now, there's one in file two, geez, I'm sorry, there's one here. There's copy of it in, in your folder that was given to you. So if everyone is okay with this or whatever, then we'll vote on approval tonight. If you need a little bit more time, that's fine too, but I guess to be fair, Mr. Hopkins, he can get on down the road with this. And of course, next few months, evaluations will be coming up, so, so we kind of.
At least, at least you know where the target is, no?
Yeah, you need to know the target, sometimes it moves, sometimes it moves. So, but then, it looks really good, I think you did a great job, I mean, compliments to whoever put this. good, I think combined those, but it came out.
Michelle says she helped with the creating the document that added that, but also a lot of it was copied from a.
The day.
So a lot of that was just copied and pasted from that. The other part is, if, whatever documents you choose, or whatever, if you do make changes or whatever, it can be done digitally, so those of you who choose not to use a hard copy, it is, it will be made available to you to use.
At the time, at the time when we do your.
Yeah, whatever you do, so that won't be a problem either.
And, and just to let you know, we usually do it April 8, I mean, we have to do it by the end of June, but it's usually in April 8, because usually we kind of start April and the director will send us, you know, what he's done, or what he or she has done over the past year, whatever, and then we get started, and then we have a work session and go from there, so just to let you know, it's kind of what we do, but we have to do it by the end of June, that's what it's contractually. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I think it looks very, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, but I wanted to say, before we do, you sort of answered my question, and that is, you know, by law, by state law, we have to do an annual performance evaluation on superintendent, and I will say, Fayetteville City started that before the law was passed, because we recognize the parts of that, and then we have always, and, and of course, this is the evaluation if it, as it, as it is, but I think it is very useful for the superintendent each year to kind of give us some highlights and some substance of what he or she felt was the significant achievements for that year, maybe even aligned with the three, there's three major areas in this, if you look at it, there's, there's general standards, job standards, and then what's called specific performance standards based on the strategic plan, so maybe just in those three areas, if you would just be able to provide us some highlights of the chief accomplishments in there, we're not trying to, we're not looking for Gone with the Wind here, but something that's, something that's.
No more in base.
What we.
No more in base.
That's right, no, nothing like that, nothing extensive, but something that would, because honestly, if you're like me, when you sit down to fill this out, to think back over the year, to think, oh, well, specifically have we done this year?
What I'll do, and what I've been in the past, I will use this as the rubric, and then I will summarize as a self-assessment, every, every one of those I will give, you know, either an action item or whatever, or something like that, that's, and then you can clarify.
Yeah, and, and, I'm just saying, we've always been very, we give you plenty of time, whether it be 30 days, whatever, we give you that form, whatever, we give you ample time and then go from there.
It's a, it's a great help to me, uh, fill this out, so I'll make a motion that we approve this performance, it's from, understanding that we change this every year based on the board's decision, so.
Yeah. I have a motion to approve the new evaluation form.
Okay.
Have a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good, thank you, very good. All right, the only other thing, I got one, one more thing, I, I always come to year end, whatever, and I've been saying before, but it is about year end, and I want to congratulate Mr. Mark Clark for his service as TSB president, I guess your official year is year end, year of year end?
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to say, it's been on my mind, and I know we mentioned it before, because convention time and everything, but I just want to say, on behalf of the system, you know, this board, we really appreciate you serving and the exposure, and you've thrown our system out in front of the whole state, and we're very proud of that, proud of you, and appreciate that very much, so I want to pass that on to you. Forward dismissed, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great to have you, wonderful, be a board, and look forward to serving with you, and we've accomplished a lot, we've had a lot of successes, we're not perfect, but we try to do the best we can for the kids, and that's what it's all about. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, and that's all I have, unless somebody says anything, we stand in turn.